This is a subcommittee meeting of the Finance Committee. Scheduled this evening is the library at 5:30, schools at 6 o'clock, and Recreation Department at 6:15. These are our budget hearings of the Finance Subcommittee. We do have a quorum of the City Council present, so I'm required to read the following notice. This notice of a City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting is posted in the event that a quorum of the City Council is present at the Standing Committee meeting. If less than a quorum of the City Council is present, no committee of the Whole Meeting shall take place. If a quorum is present, any such meeting shall be restricted to the Standing Committee agenda items listed above. The first department to present this evening, as I indicated earlier, is the library. So if our director and assistant director would like to join us inside the corral here. At the outset, I would like to disclose publicly that I am a member of the Library Board of Trustees, which is part of the governing mechanism of the public library. It is an unpaid volunteer position, which I do, and I won't speak for Consul Shalfo-Zephyr, but she does too, for the love of the library mission and books. So, Consul Shalfo-Zephyr, did you want to formally make the same sort of disclosure?
Certainly. I am a member of the Board of Trustees of the Lemmonster Public Library and happy to serve in that capacity.
Thank you very much. With that said, Alex, if you'd like to give us a brief overview of the goings-on at the library and particularly your budget.
Absolutely. Can you hear me okay? Is that better?
Yes.
Well, good afternoon. Thank you for having us. I'm Alex Lent. I'm Director of the Lemmonster Public Library. With me is Nicole Butler, our Assistant Director. And we're both shocked that we're back here already. It seems like this year has flown by. So thank you for having us back. It has been a quick year, but it's been an important year for the library. A return to normal operations after a disrupted fiscal '20 and a very disrupted fiscal '21 due to the COVID-19 pandemic. This year has not been without disruption, but it has been a successful year. We've already surpassed last year in almost all the categories we track: number of books circulated, computer usage, et cetera. And we still have a month and a half left in the year. We're not quite at pre-COVID numbers, but we expect to finish the year within a couple points of FY '20, maybe a little bit above, maybe a little bit below, but that's right about where we want to be at this time. And we expect to sail past that next year. Next year, we look forward to a few particularly exciting projects that I'd like to share with you. We're going to be launching a new mobile library so we can expand our existing delivery service to homebound patrons and bring full library services out into the community. So you'll see us popping up at parks and playgrounds and in neighborhoods and city events. So stop by and sign up for a card if you don't have one, or browse and check out material. We can return material there too. Consult a librarian, and we're talking about having off-site programs as well. We also hope to open a makerspace, which is a combination art studio, classroom, science lab, and workshop where residents can access tools and technologies they probably wouldn't be able to access on their own. They'll be able to create art and engineer solutions to real-world problems and prototype new inventions. A lot of people think of 3D printers when they think of makerspaces. This isn't a totally fair connection. There are lots of... Makerspaces can be very varied. There can be some that are all about woodworking, some that are all about fabric, all about robotics. So you don't have to have a 3D printer. That said, we really want a 3D printer, and we're hoping to get one. We think it makes sense, especially considering Lemmonster's connection to the plastics industry. A 3D printer would allow users to manipulate plastic and design with plastic in a new and exciting way, and we'd love to offer that opportunity. You know, who knows? Maybe the makerspace will help inspire the next generation of Mr. Doyle's. So that would be a nice thing. This year, we're also working to establish a new strategic plan to help guide the next five years of library service to the community. This is a really exciting, invigorating process that will involve getting out into the community, listening to what people need and want from their library, what they dream of for their library. We really look forward to this process. It's one of my favorite things to do as a library director, and I'm glad I get to do it so soon after coming. The budget we're proposing centers more around our day-to-day operations than these projects, but we were really excited about the projects and we wanted to spread that. We're pleased with the budget as submitted. We think it sets us up for a successful year, and it will allow us to continue to provide excellent resources, services, and events to the public. Importantly, this budget also meets the financial requirements of the State Aid to Public Libraries Program, which is sort of like the library version of Chapter 90 aid. By meeting these requirements, we expect to receive $90,000 in state funding, which we'd really like. So the budget increase we're proposing is far less than $90,000, so we think it's a good deal. We're proposing a 2.25% increase over fiscal '22, which is just shy of $36,000. Most of that's going to go to the personnel budget due to expected increases in minimum wage and step increases. The remaining $10,000 will go to our operating budget, to our building and grounds line. This increase allows us to keep pace with rising costs and continue to take good care of our beautiful building, which is going to be 15 years old next month. Major building matters, so if we had to, for a random example, replace the roof, are handled outside of our regular operating budget. Regular maintenance, annual and monthly testing, cleaning services, minor repairs, these come out of our operating budget. And as the building ages, repairs and replacements become more common. The building is overall in excellent shape, but as the building ages, this happens. And additionally, costs are simply going up. So this line increase doesn't mean that we're going to be taking on more with this budget. It just means that we're going to be able to keep pace with rising need. We've also proposed one additional change to our operating budget, which is combining our audiovisual books and replacement books lines into a single line called "library materials." This change is budget-neutral, it's not going to change how much we spend on these items or even what kind of items we buy, but it does make it easier to make mid-year adjustments to individual budget, individual collection budgets. This is admittedly a boring, behind-the-scenes administrative change, but apparently I'm all about that, so I'm really excited about this one. Being able to move money from one collection to another allows us to be a bit more nimble and adjust to mid-year trends and mitigate supply chain issues, which has been a real issue. For example, right now, the movie industry hasn't caught up from COVID yet, so we're seeing a lot fewer DVDs that we want to add to the collection. But the publishing industry is a little bit farther ahead, and right now, the large print sub-industry is really... There's a glut of large print books that we do want to add. So what we'd want to do is take some money from DVDs and move it over to large print. Currently, we have to do an interdepartmental transfer, and it creates a lot of work for our friends at City Hall, and it takes a while. So this would still be transparent. It really wouldn't change all that much. It would just make it a little bit easier, a little bit less red tape. So on that thrilling, behind-the-scenes administrative note, that's all we've got. We're happy to take questions if you have any.
Thank you, Alex. As for the aforementioned reason, I have the pleasure of working with you and Nicole on a regular basis, and I can tell you, we've both been an amazing asset to the library and to the city, and we are well... We are the beneficiaries as a community of your excellent work, and thank you for that very cogent overview of the operations at the library. And with that, I don't have any questions, and I'll go to my clerk, Consul Pauline Cormier.
No, thank you for coming in. I don't have any questions. I'm good.
And my third member, Consul Angelini.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to say that Alex's presentation was wonderful, and I don't have any questions either. So it's a sign that you've done a heck of a job.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And with that, we'll go outside the Finance Committee and to the Consul President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to... I don't have any questions, but I just want to say that, you know, obviously, there's thousands of people that shuffle through the library on an annual basis, and I have to tell you, I never hear a complaint. So that's kudos to you and your staff. You know, that speaks volumes. It's a very, very clean operation, and nobody ever... I never hear any complaints of anybody that's went through, so keep doing a good job.
Thank you very much. We have a great team.
You're welcome.
Well said. Thank you, Consul President. Cormier, Consul Deacon.
Just wanted to congratulate you for doing the job that you guys do over there. It's one of the gems in downtown, definitely an asset to the community, and I have no other questions. But thank you for what you guys do over there. It's beautiful. Thank you.
And Consul Shalfo-Zephyr.
Yep. Thank you very much. I don't really have questions, but I just want to expand on one thing. The budget, there's so much more than just books and DVDs and things like that that people can come in and borrow. You know, you have lots of other materials and programming that is not included in this budget because that is funded. So if you can talk about programming and where the funds come from for that, and the extent of the programming that's done throughout the library, and then also the library of things, because there's a variety of really cool things, I think, that people can borrow at the library that they don't necessarily know about.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to talk about that. So we say we have books, movies, music, magazines, toys, tools, games, musical instruments, and more, and the "and more" category is really doing a lot of work for us these days. So yeah, if you want to check out a metal detector, or a telescope, or all sorts of things, board games at the library, you can do that. It works just like checking out a book. We have sensory kits and take-home discovery kits, is what we call them, for the kids' room. And we do... That comes out of our normal operating budget, but most of our programming or event money is fundraised either by the friends or through donations. And I think we hover around 4,500 events a year, something like that, or 45... I'm sorry, no. A large number of events. As soon as I said that out loud, I was like, I couldn't possibly be right. I believe we're at about... Well, I don't even want to say now because I'm no longer confident. But we do multiple events every day for all ages. A lot of them are handled in-house, but a lot of them are outside, performers who come in. We're having a big band in September that we're all excited for. We'll be clearing the second floor to make room for that, and the week before we do that, we're going to have life-size dinosaur inflatables on the second floor, and they'll go all the way to the third floor. So there's a lot of fun stuff going on.
Mm-hmm. One thing I just thought of too is that, you know, the staff is wonderful, and Consul Badanzo and I have been, you know, fortunate enough to work with you guys for the last several months and years. But the staff is also really good and very creative. I know that individual department heads and other folks in the library raise private grant funds to do programming. For example, in the children's room, I know the genealogy department has done some of that as well. So I just want to recognize them and also give the community a broader sense of kind of... You're getting funds from a variety of sources.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you.
Well said, Consul. And Consul Brady.
Thank you. I'll just echo what everyone says. What a great job you guys are doing over there. Just a quick question, because you used to be able to get tickets and things to the aquarium or things like that. Is that still...
It is. Yeah, we have all sorts of museum passes, and yeah, they're going strong.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Consul. I do see that Consul Afrida has arrived. We'll give her a moment to get settled and see if she would like to ask the library director or his assistant any questions. Do you have any questions for the library? Thank you, Consul Afrida. Alex, thank you very much. Nicole, thank you very much. Nice to see you again. Hopefully, the next year doesn't come quite too quick.
Thank you very much.
And hopefully, we'll see you again sometime soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
That's an interesting question, because they're not assigned a time.
No, they're not. I asked people to apologize, and they said it's not.
I'll wait. I'll do them at the end.[1204.83]
Six o'clock now, and the school budget presentation is scheduled. I see the superintendent is very efficient. She's already set up with her staff inside the chambers here.
We're ready.
And Superintendent Deacon, I'll turn this over to you to give us an overview, and the council may have some questions after that.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Before you start the meeting.
Yes.
I was able to contact the Ethics Commission last week.
Yeah.
And got some good information, and I'm going to request that I recuse myself for this portion of the meeting. Thank you.
Very well. I will note your recusal or abstention from this portion of the budget hearings. All right, with that housekeeping being accomplished, I'll go back to the superintendent for her presentation.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So unlike the library, where it seems like we were just here, we're really excited to be here tonight, actually. So, thank you. The team this evening will be Melanie Michaels, business manager, and she is supported by Laureen Sapola, who is the Director of Accountability, but she also helps guide us through grants. Our grants have become pretty cumbersome and need consistent and constant monitoring, so we work as a team. No single point of failure with this team. Also behind me, I have a school committee member, principals, and actually a student in the room, so that's, that's good news. So, and this will not be exciting for her, but it's fine. School budgeting requires many voices, opinions, conversations, and at times concessions. This process all began back when the school year started and continues straight through today. This process all has been a labor of love, oxymoron, and leaders have spoken with their staff, listened to parents, reviewed our data, collaborated with agencies, and worked tirelessly with each department to create realistic priorities for the promotion of our school district. Each leader has also worked with cabinet members to solidify their needs. Recent financial circumstances, I'm calling it a course correction, but it is a course celebration, have presented a unique opportunity for the schools of Leominster. Public education comes with a promise that states that every child will be successful in school and life. And in order to do this, we must provide high-quality resources, time, access to strong instruction, and the creation of safe and supportive environments in which to learn and foster a passion for learning and curiosity. The budget you will hear this evening is directly aligned with our mission to support every child in every classroom on every single day. Student achievement is a non-negotiable for this team. Our district has spent this year evaluating what we do well and areas for improvement. We've been able to identify areas that need safety nets for the best interests of our students. I feel the budget this evening represents those areas and beyond. We are able to give schools exactly what they need versus making sure everyone gets a piece, however small it may be. All needs have been fulfilled, requests have not gone unanswered, and our classrooms will represent this commitment. I'm so excited. I don't know if there's anyone more excited about the FY '23 school year. Leominster Public Schools should be excited. Our city should be excited. We are moving and growing in the right direction at the right time. This budget is fiscally sound, appropriate, and most importantly, responsible. I ask that you hold all questions until the end of the presentation and seek your support of what is going to be a remarkable school year. Thank you. Melanie?
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening, council. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Great. Just starting off with a little background so that our public can understand. The Chapter 70 is the state aid distributed to public schools throughout Massachusetts. The formula aims to ensure that each school district has sufficient resources to provide an adequate education for all of its students, considering the ability of each local government to contribute. A district's budget is determined by multiplying the number of students at each grade level and demographic group by a set of education spending categories, and then adding those together, those dollar amounts together. The local contribution is the amount each district has the ability to reasonably contribute from local tax revenue towards the operation of its schools. It's driven by the city's property value, income, and the municipal revenue growth factor. Chapter 70 aid is then determined by filling the gap between a district's required local contribution and its foundation budget. These are a little small on the screen, but you all have it in front of you. It might be much easier to look at there. In total, for fiscal '23, the preliminary increase in net school spending is $9,751,599. $8,163,431 is from Chapter 78, and $1,588,168 is from the required district contribution. This is not the final budget number. The House and the Senate release and debate their own versions of the budget before negotiating a single version that will be signed by the start of the fiscal '23 school year. Massachusetts took a closer look at the inequitable gaps that continued to be revealed in the formula over the years. In November 2019, the Commonwealth enacted the Student Opportunity Act. It is finally addressing the real costs of educating low-income students, educating special education and addressing, excuse me, special education students and addressing English learners, as well as providing guidance and psychological services and providing health insurance to employees and retirees. The Act will be phased in fully by 2027. As you can see, this is a tremendous victory for Leominster, adding over $9.7 million in additional funding for fiscal '23 over fiscal '22, which is about 11.98%. Next. Again, small, but it's in front of you. It's much easier to read. As mentioned in the last slide, Chapter 70 is impacted heavily by student enrollment and demographics. The Student Opportunity Act increased the number of tiers used for the low-income increment rates from 10 to 12. Districts like Leominster with higher concentrations of low-income students benefit from higher rates. The Act also reinstated the definition of low-income enrollment used prior to fiscal '17, which was based on 185% of the federal poverty level. It replaces the economically disadvantaged designation that was based on only 133% of the federal poverty level. If you take a look at the low-income enrollment for fiscal '23, which is 3,586, compared to fiscal '22, which was 2,952, you will see enrollment increased by 634 students. This equates to approximately $6.2 million. It's also worth mentioning, the formula is based on the school district enrollment from October 1 of the prior year. In October, public school enrollment in Massachusetts remained 4% below pre-pandemic levels. Still in the midst of the pandemic, some families had not decided to return to full in-person learning. The district enrollment number taken on October 1, which was 5,976 students, is down from fiscal '22 by 14 students. Pre-pandemic enrollment in fiscal '19 was 6,113. Coincidentally, current enrollment, as of a snapshot in time this month, is 6,113 students. That's 137 students who were not accounted for on October 1 of last year. 137 students the district is not receiving funding for from Chapter 70. Fiscal '23 general fund budget will be supplemented by several other resources that are available. We have revolving accounts that support specific programs or services, such as Circuit Breaker, which offsets special education tuitions, and School Choice, which offsets students who attend from another district. There is also federal and state grant funding through the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to support the goals and needs of the district. The district has also been given one-time federal funding. This is provided to the school district to address the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic and is available through fiscal '24. As you can see, the district has carried forward a large portion of ESER 2 into fiscal '23 for a total available one-time funding of $15,269,499. What has the district done with all of that one-time ESER funds? These funds are critical in addressing unprecedented challenges caused by the public health crisis. ESER 1 was all about physical safety and virtual learning. The district stocked up on cleaning supplies, personal protection gear, Chromebooks, hotspots, and much more. ESER 2 and 3 are still addressing some health and safety projects, such as security cameras, cleaning equipment, upgrading HVAC equipment, but they are mainly to support students' academic, social, emotional, and mental health. For fiscal '23, wages and salaries make up 62% of the school's budget. From year to year, the salary budget increases by contractual increases, such as cost of living, step increases, and lane increases. For fiscal '23, the district is requesting a total of 854.8 FTEs, or full-time equivalent employees, equaling $56,361,703. This request includes all current positions, currently posted positions, and positions that will need to be filled in fiscal '23. The request is based on projected enrollment and class size. For fiscal '23, the district is requesting to carry forward 11 FTEs that were posted in fiscal '22 but were not yet filled. These positions equal $636,500. The district is also requesting an additional 10.2 FTEs for fiscal '23, equaling $661,554. These positions will address growing areas of student need. Most of that need revolves around our growing ESL population. We're looking for six ESL teachers for the new fiscal year. These positions for the general fund will total 21.2 FTEs, or $1,298,054. As you can see, we are also including an athletic trainer, which is an MIAA requirement, district-wide equity position, two STEM specialists, two science teachers, a .2 teacher for LCE, three vocational teachers, which includes a new teacher for the business program, their new program, 3.5 secretaries, this includes an additional tech aid secretary, two guidance counselors, and a .5 paraprofessional. Beyond the general fund, the district will be using ESER funds to hire eight positions that will be contractual through fiscal '24. These positions include an assistant to facilities, two academic learning center teachers, two adjustment counselors, two nurses, and a humanities content specialist. Benefits and fixed charges make up 16% of the budget request. The numbers include benefits such as health insurance, dental insurance, and life insurance for both active and retired employees. two adjustment counselors, two nurses, and a humanities content specialist. Benefits and fixed charges make up 16% of the budget request. The numbers include benefits such as health insurance, dental insurance, and life insurance for both active and retired employees, as well as their beneficiaries. You can see, historically, we have had an average increase of 8% to 10% annually. This is not all due to an increase in the cost of insurances. Participation by members has grown each year. Since Q1 of fiscal '21, membership has grown by 6.7%. In order to project for fiscal '23, we use current enrollment, the potential increase in membership, and new positions. The total projected increase is 8.5%, or $1,156,711. Special education tuitions have always been a tough projection for the budget. The costs can fluctuate greatly from year to year, depending on the individual student's service needs. From one year to the next, it is challenging to project how many students may need to be sent out of district, or how many may move into the district. For fiscal '23, we are projecting that special education tuitions will be 6% of the general fund budget, $5,556,642. As you can see, historically, there is no exact trend in the increase or decrease of tuitions. In the past, we have relied on funds we receive from Circuit Breaker to supplement the tuition expenses. You can see, in fiscal '21, we were able to absorb all of the tuition expense in the general fund, allowing, per mass general law, to carry forward $2.1 million of Circuit Breaker. This has allowed the district to continue to carry forward a supplemental balance of $2.4 million in fiscal '22 and $2 million for fiscal '23. You can see, we only included the net $5,556,642 for the general fund budget request. Indirect charges are the expenses that are incurred by the city for the benefit of the schools. This includes costs such as administration, retirement expenses, DBW services, school resource officers, and state assessments for School Choice sending tuitions and charter schools. On an annual basis, the City Comptroller provides the school with a signed agreement, followed by a summary sheet, and supplemental detail of the calculations of these expenses. For fiscal '23, the total indirect charges are estimated to be $4,622,803.13. Thank you, Jen.
I assume you have that signed agreement?
Yes, we do.
We do.
Utilities, repair, and maintenance costs account for about 5% of the fiscal '23 budget request, or $4,483,363. As we are all seeing in our own homes, the cost of heating and fuel are skyrocketing. Our grocery bills have all but doubled, and those small home improvement projects that have been put on the back burner because the cost of supplies has more than doubled. The budget for the district covers the utility, repair, and maintenance for 11 buildings and equipment, heating and utilities for those 11 buildings, custodial supplies, lease of equipment such as copiers, school security, and much more. The budget needed to reflect these increase in costs. For fiscal '23, we have increased the utility, repair, and maintenance budget by 40% over last year, an additional $1.2 million. What's left, 6%, or $5,404,352.67. This is used to pay expenses that although not considered a fixed cost, such as salaries, they are still essential expenses that directly affect the students in the classroom. Things such as instructional technology, instructional supplies, hardware, software, psychological services, medical and therapeutic services, professional development, and general The Leominster Public Schools is requesting $56,361,703 in wages and salaries, $30,175,430 in expenses, $4,622,803 in indirects, for a total fiscal '23 net school spending budget Thank you for supporting the students of Leominster.
Okay.
No questions?
All right. Thank you. As indicated earlier, my name's Mark Bedanza. I'm the Finance Chair. With me is my clerk, Counselor Pauline Cormier, and my third member, Counselor Peter Angelini. I don't have the longest tenure down here, but this is my ninth budget, and to tell you that I'm impressed is an understatement. I have never seen a budget presentation by the school department like that.
Thank you.
It just, you know, is detailed, succinct, it's really very well done. I won't say I'm entirely surprised by the presentation tonight, because I had a chance to review the submittal, which is equally impressive. You know, this stuff is a little muddy, the way we fund schools in Massachusetts, and it's always hard to wrap your head around this, especially if you're the average taxpayer out there in the community, but you made it as clear as it could possibly be made.
Thank you.
As a bonus, we have indirect charges squared away with an agreement, which I think is a first since I've been here, which is no small consequence. Obviously, what's happened on the state level with the foundation budget has greatly benefited Leominster in terms of how we calculate. It's all about statistics, as we all know, can do a lot of things with numbers, and certainly the numbers now tilt in our favor a lot better than they used to. And it's wonderful that that's inerring to the benefit of the school department and our children. I really don't have any questions. You really answered everything that I have. You know, well done, and thank you very much for your efforts on behalf of our most important resource, our kids.
Thank you.
With that, I will turn it over to Counselor Cormier.
I also too, if I may, just I want to thank our new comptroller.
Absolutely.
She's been a wonderful partner. We meet weekly, we...
I talk to her often. She's wonderful.
It helps to keep us in line as well, so...
Well, as the Finest Chair, I echo those comments. I know what you're talking about.
Thank you for being very good to work with. I appreciate it.
All right, Counselor Cormier.
I don't have any questions specifically about the budget. I do have a question. I know over COVID, we provided a lot of school meals.
Correct.
Over the school year because of COVID. I'm just wondering if there's any programs, anything that's going to go through this summer, anything that we can, to help those families? I know it came in so handy, and I know some of the people involved in the programs, and they worked so hard. Is there any plan to continue that on past COVID?
Yes. Well, we know that we will be able to continue the work that we're doing through the summer, and there will be sites at the schools that have summer programs, and all of our students will be able to access the free lunch, breakfast and lunch at those sites for the summer. We're still a little bit up in the air, and it depends on the federal government to determine what will happen during next school year. Currently, we are complete free and reduced lunch at all of our schools and all of our grade levels. That may be cut back a little bit next year, back to where we were before, which would mean that we will be pre-K through 5. We will have complete free and reduced lunch, and then we will have, at the middle and high school, we will be back to some students paying. So we are still waiting to hear from the federal government if that will be extended through next year.
We're hopeful. We're hopeful. It's been a wonderful program. Food insecurity has not been an issue for two years, and that has taken a lot of angst off our shoulders. Also, in this budget, we have removed all fees for students next year. No transportation fees, athletic fees, AP test fees. We have enough money that we are going to cover that and introduce more students into programming that way. We're looking for higher and higher participation rates. So the school department will once again pay all the fees for students.
Excellent. Excellent. And that was along the line of my next series of questions. One issue that, one question that I'd have on the budget, and I don't have it marked. It's the athletic budget, and there was, I believe, $10,000 out to EMTs, ambulance. Now with the hiring of a athletic director, can we assume that that, you're still going to have to pay out that money for the ambulance EMTs?
Correct, correct.
In addition?
Correct.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Counselor Angelini?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, ladies. Thank you. Now, as Superintendent, I can understand why you were enthusiastic about this budget.
Very enthusiastic.
I share your enthusiasm. It's easy to, it was easy to digest. It's obviously a lot of material, a lot of data, but it was reader-friendly. When you look at the pie chart that the mayor provided in his budget, you see what a tremendous slice of the overall budget, your budget is. And of course, transportation's not part of this budget, but obviously, it's in the overall budget. And because such a large portion of your budget is dedicated to contractual obligations and insurances and things like that, it's really a challenge for you to stretch those other dollars.
Yep.
And I must say, I was impressed on your cover letter, where you referenced the one-time funding used in for, for instance, for Vans.
Sustainable projects.
So that we don't run into a situation where next year's budget looks like we're cutting certain areas.
Correct.
Because we don't, you know, quote-unquote, knows what's coming next year from either Washington DC or Beacon Hill. We have no idea as to you, so... I know, obviously, the English learners, the populations are up, which is another challenge that you have. Low-income kids are up, another challenge, so you certainly have your work cut out for you, and I think you've done a wonderful job. I just want to, real quickly, I'm a proponent, have been for a long time, of building maintenance, and I noticed that in this budget, you've increased building and grounds maintenance significantly. And Ms. Michael, I think you referenced, you know, the cost of fuel and materials and things, but certainly, the increase in that, those two line items are significant. Is there anything in particular?
I think it's everything to do with our facilities.
Okay, it's just a catch-all for...
Yeah. So our buildings have needed some 10-to-11 care for a long time, and we no longer have to use duct tape. We are prepared to address any issue that has happened, especially around our HVAC systems. That's a non-negotiable. We have to make sure our air quality is where it needs to be, and sustainable, that our buildings are clean and taken care of. And our new facilities director has done a tremendous job. We did ask that he get an assistant because there is so much to keep on top of at this point, and he is the point person. He is seven days a week right now.
Yeah.
So our buildings have never looked better, and we are, we're investing in our physical spaces so that they're attractive, and they are clean, and they do feel safe, and we have cameras, and it just is where students want to be. And everybody, and staff, needs to feel reassured when they come to work every day as well. So we're investing. We care about our buildings. We have beautiful buildings. They just needed a little bit of a spit shine.
I agree. Well, thank you so much. I appreciate you coming down. A lot of work went into this, and I appreciate it.
She got it down to one binder. If it was up to Mel, you were getting two.
And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, Madam Superintendent, you married a wonderful guy.
Oh, thank you. So he's told me.
No further questions?
Counselor Cormier, go ahead.
Just quickly, you mentioned the cameras in the schools. Do we have security cameras in all the schools?
So, we do. But our high school is our largest project right now. We're bringing in, Dr. Dubs, over 200, over 200 cameras are coming in right now. The process is out to bid.
Okay.
So we've walked the school this week, and we're ready to go.
Yep, great, great. And you expect that for the next school year?
Absolutely.
Perfect, thank you.
Excellent. Counselor President Cormier?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I just, this is my 13th budget, and I don't think I've ever seen anything so amazing and so well put together, detailed. I think several years ago, we came down here, and there was like maybe two pages handed up to us, and a lot of explanation, and really nothing to, nothing to really look at, but this, this detail is, that's been put together is absolutely amazing. We've certainly come a long way. I just have a few questions. The eight positions that you mentioned that are funded through 2024, obviously, no promises were made beyond then because it is ESER funding, but are those things that you're hoping, if conditions permit, that you can continue them, but just there's been no promises made?
Yeah, absolutely. If that's the case, we would love to absorb those costs, but we have to be cautious at this point, and we'll see what happens after the two years. Like you said, we don't know where we're going to be, so...
Right, right.
Yeah, but those are posted with the contractual two years, and everybody's aware when they take the position.
Good, okay. The other thing that we are, that comes to mind is, you know, I think we've all, especially in 2017, you know, and probably since then, having lived through that, I mean, we all sat here and wished we could have added 21 new positions, and now we're there. But one of the things that comes to my mind, after having budget hearings Tuesday night with the DPW and Police Department, is we have, we have funding now, but we can't find people. Nobody wants to work, nobody wants to do that kind of work. Do you think you might be in this position? How competitive is the market right now? And do you think...
Yeah, I mean, we carried forward 11 positions from fiscal '22 that we didn't hire for.
Couldn't even fill.
Right.
Wow.
So, you know, the hope is there, and we are out there posting and interviewing, but certain positions are tough to find.
And it's very competitive.
And it's frustrating. We always wish we had the money to do it. Now we have the money, we can't find the people.
Exactly.
So the Department of Ed also is having a job fair that we're participating in.
Good.
So all districts are coming together, and we're trying to promote people to get back into education. It's a good place to be, and it has a great potential and a great future. It's just been a difficult couple of years, so...
Right.
People are taking advantage of opportunities, and I can't blame them, and I wish them luck, but we need, we need some great educators here, so we'll keep looking.
Good. Well, you're doing a good job.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work, and I hope that if I'm here for another 13 budgets, that they all look like this, because it certainly makes our life very easy. I sat through 2017. I was actually in this very seat, and that wasn't very fun. So I hope we can be like this every year. Congratulations, you guys did a good job. Almost, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel President. Counsel Freedom, I think you sat through more budgets than...
I'm going to start off with this being my 36th budget on school committee.
I can guarantee you, I will not make that number.
But I think there's an important piece to that, those 36 years, and I think it would have been very difficult not to be successful this year with the amount of money we've gotten. You look at the ESER money, one, two, three, look at the Opera money that we've had come into the city. A city would have to really be mismanaged to really not provide as they should with all the opportunities they've had with, with most of this money. I've seen over the 36 years, we've had friends in the House, we had friends in the Senate, we had Senator Antonioni as Chair of Education, with Tom Birmingham. We got, Leominster got a lot of money when other communities weren't getting them. I think we need to be very careful beyond 2024, on the municipal side and the school side. This isn't going to last forever. We need to make the most of it and put it in, in where, where it belongs and be sure... I mean, there are some communities that are really concerned about the school transportation issue. I mean, that's a major issue that we're dealing with on, on the MMA, is how anybody's dealing, you know, with transportation, where it's going to come from. There's a monopoly, you don't have a really good bid process, and that's going to become serious. And when you get beyond 2024, that's something that's going to affect us pretty seriously. I've been in the fight on that side of the fence and on this side of the fence about where do you draw the line on, on picking kids up? You know, you have Wood 3, when you have Grant Street, and you don't have sidewalks, and you're two miles from Fall Brook. You can't not pick those kids up. You know, we've always had a good moral obligation in this city to do that, and I would hope that that will always continue. But I just think with all this success that we have on both sides, we need to be very careful on what's coming down the future, because it's, I don't think it's going to be pretty down the road. And, you know, we'll get through 2024 with, with no problem, but I think we need to enjoy it now, but I think we really need to be careful on what we're looking at for the future as well.
That, I think that was our main focus, putting this together. The positions are really limited, so when you look at it... The positions are really limited, so when you look at it, when you see a point two or a point five, we have scrutinized our classrooms. Our Gen Ed classrooms are in good shape. We don't have a lot of classroom teachers here that we're looking for. It's really about our new population coming in. Our Portuguese students just this year increased by 60%.
Yeah.
Our low income is up to 62%. Those are the factors that are really ruling this budget. And I've asked Mel to project this budget out three years, knowing what the sal, the salaries could get out of control. I never want to see a layoff again. I never want to see cuts. We cannot do that. Our student body, for the first time, has become a minority majority and we need to reflect that. And we need to make sure that those needs are met. So, people, that piece that we, you know, for sustainability, we're very careful about Ms. Frida, you told me years ago, grants, 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 grants. That's her. We are still, even though we have an abundance in the foundation, we apply for everything. So, next year, our students K through the high school are getting new curriculum in almost every subject area, all the pieces. It's not that we'll take care of the Gen Ed classroom and then we'll wait for this group later. Every student in the city, Lemmonstern, will be getting a high-quality, evidence-based program next year with all the bells and whistles. Every child in our district right now has a student device. They will have the ability to have a workbook, a textbook, no sharing, no bothering. Everyone deserves it. That's a sustainable purchase and it's all done through grants. None of that is coming out of our local budget. So, that's the work. All the professional development we've applied for is coming out of grants. So, we, we keep going. We keep going. That, that has really been a nice supplement for us. It allows us to do what, what the big W towns do. It's time for Lemmonstern to be the big L. And I'm ready to push us all forward. It's, it's a lot of work, but our kids deserve it. So, does, so does our staff.
Right.
You know, no more standing at the copier machine all day because you will have every material that you need. No more coming out of your pocket to go buy things. We have it for you. We've taken care of every level, but we're still going to apply.
And I did bring up, as you know, as we requested information from you regarding the US News and World Report.
Yeah. That was an unfortunate article, truly. You want to speak?
No.
Okay. I'm happy to, but what you have in front of you, we have, we've put together, hoping that that would... We vetted this and we have the principal.
Understand that.
It's a very hurtful commentary. It's, it's the way things get reported. The state has our students recorded correctly. Being a comprehensive high school, this National College Board pulls all students in AP courses. So, we know at the CTI side, we had 17 seniors last year take AP courses with 36 exams between them, receiving a three or higher. We build very specialized schedules for those students because they have to go over to the LHS side to take those classes. And so, the recording of that looks like they're all on the LHS side. So, we're in talks right now with College Board to say, understand, we have three separate high schools on one campus. We have to make sure. The Department of Ed has it correct. US News does not. So, we are a very, we're excited. Our CTI is growing. Our vocational, I wouldn't give that program up for a million dollars.
I wasn't really concerned about it, but a lot of people have read it.
Yes, we heard.
That's the bigger, that's the bigger concern.
Yeah, we heard about it as well.
Is that so many people have read it and the CTEI has such a good reputation.
Such a good reputation.
That it was just not making sense.
And it didn't match up.
And, and...
And we're excited. We, the state allowed us to bring on a new program next year, which has been a long time coming and we're looking to add an additional one the year after.
And the reason I brought it up is that we were looking at the budget tonight and if there was a problem, you know, were we addressing enough money to fix that problem if there was?
Yes.
Because now's the time to do it if it was a problem.
So, we had a really good conversation about the VOTAC. Their materials, the cost is out of control. So, this year, we gave buildings what they needed, not you get 10%, you get 10%, you get 10%. If CTI needed 30 to 40% because their materials cost that much, then that's what we did. And then they also have grants that they can dig in as well. So, people received what they needed and CTI needed a little bit more. And so, we did, we did address that. So, they are whole right now.
Yep.
CTEI is going to, is going to flourish.
It is.
In the future.
Absolutely.
I mean, we're, we're dealing with workforce development at Mount Wachusett.
Correct.
As a trustee, we're, we're really, it's overwhelming the amount of companies that, that we're dealing with and we're in a major renovation with Mount Wachusett on our Lemmonstern campus. It's being shut down now. It's a total renovation and it's going to be expanded. And I'm asking them, you know, to, to help participate, you know, with Lemmonstern and the Mount and really broadcast what we have here and connect it to Mount Wachusett and have, have something that's really solid for, for the workforce development. And what we want to see is business flourishing and provide, you know, workforce for our own businesses. So...
Do you want to add?
If I may, we have no control over US News and World Report, obviously. There is a explicit bias in the indicators that they are using to determine this ranking. And if you look at Massachusetts, some of the top vocational schools, along with Lemmonstern, CTEI are listed in the bottom 40. And that's explicitly because of the indicators and where they're pulling that data from. So, we appreciate actually the opportunity to come forward tonight and to provide you with that information because it will get out to the constituents and they will hopefully have a better understanding about the fact that there is a bias to this.
All set, Counselor? Thank you. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Thank you very much. I've been through a few budgets myself. I haven't counted them all, but I've been through a number of them. And I do recall last year, you know, having lots of material and a lot of data, you know, supporting the budget request last year. Thank you very much for this. Very well done. You know, I agree with my colleagues here that it's a lot of really good information in it. And I read most of it. I think the context is just really helpful. I think the game changer this year and why this is a very different meeting is the Student Opportunity Act and the change in the foundation formula. Because it seems like the state in Chapter 70 money is really funding the population that we have and that we need to serve, right? You know, the $8 million in Chapter 70 money is going to go a long way to take care of those English language learners, those low-income kids, the kids with special needs and get the materials to the teachers, the staff and the people in the classrooms and in the schools that need them. So, I'm relieved.
I am so relieved.
I am happy. I have Paula's quote here. This budget is sound, appropriate and responsible. I'm going to be really happy voting for it. I just have to tell you, and in the past, as you know, you know, I've had problems with the school budget in particular. So, I think it's really important to give a shout-out to our state delegation, who I know worked really hard on the Student Opportunity Act so that we would get the funding, the kids would be counted, you know, in the system appropriately so that we would get the, you know, the, the right reimbursements for that. So, thank you each and every one of you. It's always really nice to see the support that the school department, you know, provides for the superintendent during the budget meetings. I know that you guys always, you know, come down and we appreciate the time and we certainly appreciate, you know, the interest and the support. It means a lot.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And Counselor Brady.
As a first-time budget participant, you have set the bar very high. And I'm sorry, in the past, you haven't had this. And you're welcome. Thank you.
They were waiting for you, Bill.
Yeah. Just briefly...
We can show you some really good ones. I can tell you that. I still have them.
Keep those with the dust.
As a, as a former Chapter 74 educator, you know, my, I'm very in tune with vocational.
Correct.
And I'd love to see the increase in that, if not more so. You have a new Assistant Superintendent?
Yes, Mr. Steven Momoni.
Counsel knows that.
As of July 1.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
He doesn't like attention, he's saying. You don't have to get used to it.
I was like, get over that.
So, again, no questions.
Thank you.
Just maybe more for vocational.
Yes. Gotcha.
Thank you very much. That has to set a record in terms of the amount of time expended for the school presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down and all the principals and school committee members. Thank you very much. Thank you for what you do for, like I said, our most important resource and asset. Thank you.
Thank you.
Real quick one.
If you can attend graduation on June 4th, it's two weeks. I can't believe this year is wrapping up. Please let the high school know. We're graduating 462 this year.
Real quick, Paula, when is the bus contract up?
We just renewed.
We just renewed.
Last year. Last fiscal year.
So, we just renewed. Yep. Yes. And I have to thank the city that, under my tenure, that has not even been a discussion.
Right.
The city has taken care of it. They've committed to taking care of all students. We need transportation. There's a lot of students that would not be able to attend school without that.
Right.
So, it's been a commitment of the city to make sure that all and any students have that opportunity. And it's nice to take the fee away.
I had just one question. Do you think that come next fall, you'll be back to pre-pandemic levels or do you think some kids will still be home?
So, we, we've already exceeded.
Yep.
So, like she said, in 2019, we were at 61, 1, 3.
This morning, when I checked it, we were at 61, 26.
Oh, okay. Great.
So, students are feeling much more relieved. I, I just want a typical 180 days where nobody has to quarantine. I just want people to come to school. That's it. Staff, students, everybody, just come to school and let us do what we need to do and let's get through this recovery period as best we can.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Watch the courts.
Okay.
Did he take it?
Yeah.
It is 6:46 and I was informed earlier this week that the Recreation Director would not be available this evening. And I'll just check, is there anybody from the Recreation Department or Commission here this evening? And I'm not sure that I expected anyone to be, but, so there won't be a budget presentation this year by the Recreation Department. And the Finance Committee does have its communications, its regular communications outside of the budget on tonight's agenda and we're going to take those up now, starting with C-75. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $37,000 be made to the snow and ice expense account. Same amount be transferred from the snow and ice overtime account. This is regarding equipment repairs and restocking of consumables. So, this is an inter-budget, inter-department budget transfer, just sort of using some of the unexpended money in the overtime account, the things that they need. It would be my position to recommend this to be granted on Monday night and I'll check with Counsel Cormier.
I agree.
And Counsel Angela.
I'm in agreement as well, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So, that'll be a unanimous recommendation on C-75. C-76, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $900,000 be made to the school transportation expense account. The same amount be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. This is not unfamiliar to us. Typically, there is a margin that's left at the end of the school year that's made up by the city from excess and deficiency account, sort of standard operating procedure, as you heard just now from the School Department. They're happy that this non-eligible expense has been taken on by the city and not on their backs. And it would be my position to grant C-76. I'll check with Counsel Cormier.
I agree, Mr. Chairman.
And Counsel Angela.
I'll make the recommendation unanimous, Mr. Chairman.
Very well. Thank you, Counselor. C-77, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $450,000 be made to the street resurfacing expense account and 450, I'm sorry, $550,000 be made to the sidewalk expense account. Same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. The use of these funds are self-explanatory. We're going to supplement our Chapter 90 money and additional monies that are already appropriated to street resurfacing to get these streets and sidewalks in, in good shape. Obviously, you know, every community has a backlog of streets and sidewalks that need attention. I did chat with the comptroller as recently as earlier this evening. There is no list yet. We believe this will be a unit bid when it goes out to bid. And you heard the other night from the DPW Director that, you know, there's a big, long list of streets and sidewalks to be repaired and once they have the bids in, they'll make considerations based on need, based on underground work that is slated to be done by the various utilities and approach that with a logical way, in a logical way. And I'm sure we'll get a list just as soon as one is available. But in the meantime, it would be my position to provide the funding so that they can go out to bid. And I'd ask, I'd ask to check with Counsel Cormier.
I agree.
And Counsel Angela.